We are unmuted.
Good morning. Is the microphone working? You think? Yes. Oh, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 2024 meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president. We have a forum by the skin of our teeth. Hopefully, nobody needs a bathroom break. Let's introduce our trustees. Start with John. We'll go around.
John Johnson, Vice President.
Judith Quinn.
Don Walters. Thanks, everybody. We added a new element to the agenda, the approval of the agenda, just so that we can just make sure that everyone is clear and feels solid about the agenda as it's presented. And so I will throw out a motion to approve this March 2024 meeting agenda. So move.
Second.
The discussion. Great. All in favor? All right. Any opposed or abstained? Next item is the approval of the February 2024 minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. So move. Thanks, Sean. Do we want a second? I will second the motion, and then we'll have some numbers. I can't what? Second. I can't?
Oh, second.
That's true. I'll try. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as written? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? It is approved. Next item is the approval of the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. Belinda's pop quiz. Here we go.
Okay, I have a question on page five. There's just two different life insurance companies. I think Madison and Minnesota. Lightness on that?
Yep. Minnesota is the life insurance and Madison is the long-term disability. They're in the memo section.
Okay, so there says Madison of National Life. It's really long-term disability.
Mm-hmm. And so if you look at the next column, memo description is LTD insurance.
Long-term disability. Thank you.
I will move to accept the EALs as written. We don't have a motion on the table. So move. Any further discussion?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the EALs? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, motion. Next on the list is the treasurer's report. That will not happen until April, so we can move on. Let me turn it over to our vice president for an update on Smurla.
All right, we met on February 27. And the we were working out the going the contractor to do the boarders among the different library branches in Southern Maryland. So we're working, at the time, we're working on some sublease issues with the goal of starting in early March. So we should have an update. The idea was to the idea of the sublease would be to avoid ending the current truck lease early. So that, you know, that way that would that would absolutely wouldn't lose any money by doing it. The the Regional Library Association's website is the same thing that our website has done, is one with the Recite Me for accessibility and the languages. And I think one thing the association would like to know is you said staffs for for St. Mary's County's website and how many patrons are using their reciting tool. It's not that the there'll be some decisions made whether they go with a one-year versus a three-year, I think. So decide that in April. We approved a three-year contract with Communico for digital signage, program registration, and software. We discussed the timing for the corporate meeting board retreat on April 9. Expect to be there. I'll be doing, you know, trying to go to the eclipse on the previous day. So and we approved the new bylaws, make those available, but the idea was new bylaws to conform with state law, have five-year terms instead of three-year. So what we talked about is having the five-year limit go, you know, with the new terms going forward. You know, the people currently on the board would still be under a three-year. And then if they get reappointed, then they pick up five years from them. And next meeting is April 10. I think we had to do some rescheduling. And we had some discussions on the appointment process. And it went for a while, so I've asked Ashley for clarification, and I can forward that to you.
Sorry, John, the appointment process?
Appointment process, but the new members. So so I'm going to give you some clarification. I can share that.
I'm curious about the retreat on the 9th. How does that align with the Open Meetings Act here in the county? Is there an issue there or? No, as long as you are not discussing St. Mary's County Library business and making decisions about it, and you're simply having a retreat where you'll do team building and that kind of thing, and talk about how boards can develop, what board processes, you know, might, how those might work. But you won't be making decisions about St. Mary's County Library, and Calvert and Charles will not be making decisions about their individual board. So we're going to be okay with that.
We're going to be covered under the State of the Meeting Act, which is what we're.
Well, it will be open. It's not like this is going to be a closed meeting. Anybody can attend. And but unlike us, where state, the state law, as amended recently, a couple of years back, requires this meeting to be broadcast, that one does not have to be broadcast.
The only remaining item is that we're going forward with implementing the new logo. It's not out here from the building yet, but it is on their on their website and on their social media.
John?
John, I have a question. You mentioned a digital sign?
The digital signage. Like, like if you have a large screen TV in a lobby or something like that. And also for registering for meetings. It is a company, the vendor called Communico that handles those kind of things.
Did you get a lot of responses to the RFP for that?
I don't know. I can, we can certainly, I can certainly ask follow-up with Ashley.
Oh, one more question. So when all of these three-year terms come to an end, and the five-year terms kick in, does the fact that somebody has already done one or two, three year terms count against any of their five years, or is it like they never served?
No, it would be would be starting fresh.
Let me turn it over to Michael for the fun part. Here we go. Well, good morning, everybody. And just a reminder that at 10 o'clock, you are going to be having a presentation from an outside group who wants to talk to you about the book 300 Years of Black Cooking. So at 10 o'clock, or roughly there they're on, they should be joining us via Zoom, and they have a proposal for you. But we're going to start today with celebrations, and we have one today, three people, but sort of one thing we're celebrating with our hip hop parades. And that is for Megan Fran, who's here. Good morning, Megan. And for Nicole Vega, who is here. And I've got them all here. I don't have to go find people's mailboxes. This is a very good thing for Amy Dickinson. And this is for creating and strengthening community partnerships, as well as obtaining stock for the new seed library at all three St. Mary's County Library locations. So would anybody like to say we're out of here?
So we are actually all three here today because we are going to be individually packaging the seeds and distributing out in catalogs, so we can have them ready for our launch on April 1st. Megan did a great job in preparing a really big donation of vegetable and earth seeds for us. Amy also contributed to that. And the Master Gardeners helped us out with some native plant.
Thanks, anyone is.
Oh, sure. So our goal of the seed library is to hopefully encourage the community to get more into gardening and food independence. And it will be essentially a monthly or seasonal. You can come in and take out a select member of seed packets. We'll have information on how to grow them, what which decisions do you want to consider when you're picking out seeds? And we also be offering programs. Oh, yes. And also the some of the seeds that we have collected and Master Gardeners have collected are from Flatter County Library's very own front yard.
Are the seeds, it just said all three libraries? And they're free, just come without your and but you said seed though. I mean, there was all like a field and stuff.
Yes, actually. So the native plants specifically we have right now don't require any cold stratification or time out in winter. So that way, come April 1st, we'll complete and then have them start growing. From winter or fall and winter, we'll have some access to grow seeds that do require that cold stratification or time outside in the cold and instead of cool weather.
Is any of this effort designed for what I'll call a community garden in support of, say, a food bank, or is it all any of that, the individual gardeners?
We are working with the Community Development Corporation, the Lexington Manor Palace Park Community Garden. Earl Wilson, who's the garden manager there, and I have been working closely. Some of the seeds will be will be advertising to the gardeners of the community gardens. Some of the seeds will be able to be that by the needle beds there. And it's interesting.
Good. Congratulations on a really cool program. Thank you for highlighting that. And it's really neat also to see all the community partners you're looking at. No hugging, no seeds. Come on out and graze your garden. Here, I'm looking at the time. But we'll go ahead and start the fiscal year 24 budget review, and you have that in your packet. And I would like to address page 10 at the very end. And just clarify something. I had a conversation with John and Michael this past Monday, and just wanted to make sure that we're understanding that we have a report of the balances on, and this is, that's the end of last month, on all of our accounts. So there's a PNC Treasury account, a PNC Analysis account, and an MLGIP account. That's where we have all our money. And the money from the state basically goes into the MLGIP account. And so when we get an influx from the county and the state, that's where it goes, and it gets transferred over. And those monies don't remain in the account very long. So you can see pretty much what the total balance is. And then there's also a restricted fund balance, the amount that is set aside for things that are not part of the operating budget per se. They have restricted on how they can be spent. So total there of $90,000. There is a fund balance number, and that is the total fund balance minus the restricted balance, minus expected expenses before the next infusion. So that basically is what the money we have on hand, and it could go up, a little up, a little down. And we should ideally have two months, and this is about one. But that's just basically, want to make sure that we're understanding that after getting some questions on Monday about what our funding is and how it works. But other than that, I'll just ask if you've got any questions about the budget report.
The friends of the library, they have their own money somewhere else?
Yes, they do. This is not their money. They have their own funding, and they then vote usually twice a year.
So if we're sure that they've already given us this is what we're saying, I'm on here in Spanish, but I'm sorry, I'm stressing this. But it's real funny to be better to sort of look at.
That would cause them to they can't come out. I can hear motion from the only company that are Russian. It was a strange comment, and I I didn't do somehow with so why is that? So it looks like this. So expecting to happen because and these numbers for the FOL which was looking.
So, John? Sorry, on page 10. Help me understand. I understand the fund balance.
Sorry. The fund balance is a little over $1 million, and the restricted fund is the $90,000. So the last number is the total fund balance available minus restricted. So now you get there. So the fund balance minus nine is closer to a million. So so I'm seeing is that number, which is around 500, in this report somewhere else? It's the MLGIP number minus the restricted, because the MLGIP is our fund balance. The amounts that are in those two checking accounts are actually operating funds. The 582 number. Yes. Okay, so the one, the 1,085 minus the MLG balance, I understand that. It's the MLGIP balance minus the so it's the 582 minus 90. Yes. Got it. Thank you.
So who's saying?
Well, we have insurance, so, you know.
So this just two. Sure.
And we can talk with you about those. You know, we're getting to the point where some of the accounts would be close to 100% spent, just because we have already, you know, spent everything in that line that we're going to for the year. In other cases, at the end of the year, we may have a situation where something has gone into a negative, and as you recall from last year, you do a reconciliation.
I believe I heard at our little three-person meeting, four-person meeting, we lost an employee recently.
We did. And you met her last month, Brittany, who had finished her MLIS, and the day after was hired away by Charles County Library at $20,000 more year than they can afford. So basically, we're still, in some ways, the farm team in Southern Maryland, where people come here for a couple of years, and they are able to get a great start on their career, and then they they become attractive prospects to the majors, who will come poach them, frankly. But we we will, you know, do our best to keep filling these positions with really great, great employees. And I think that while Brittany is going to be missed, and she was immensely popular and immensely talented, we'll try to find somebody.
And it's our policy to first put this out in house?
Well, it depends on the position. So at page level position, for example, we will probably have several ways of doing that. And one is that when we put a job out through our HR system, it puts it out as it indeed. Yeah, it puts it out on Indeed, so it becomes basically national. For some positions that are professional, we put them out in-house first and see if there's internal applicants. For some positions, like a branch manager position or a library director position, you will advertise at the Maryland state level among libraries, but perhaps also nationally through the ALA.
What's your realistic expectation for having the position filled?
Well, we're going to have applicants for it, and we anticipate filling it within a couple of weeks.
Already been filled by another employee from another branch, and then it's the domino effect. So we usually end up hiring a substitute at some point, because people move up or move around. That's what we joke about. But that position's already been filled, and now there's an opening at Lexington Park. And that one is also possibly being filled by an internal applicant. And I think the interviews are actually today for that. Yes.
So so
We move quickly.
Go ahead. Yeah, it's, we do move quickly to try to fill the positions as we can, but you need a program to keep up with it. And that's one of the reasons we'd like to have a good cadre of these substitutions as we can, but you need a program And that's one of the reasons we'd like to have a good cadre of these substitutes, because they are interested. We can, in many cases, already know their capability before they even come in for an interview. So we will, I, I think we'll have pretty good luck at keeping these positions filled.
Is there anything in place as far as the formal succession plan?
Um.
Like, you know, like, you know, like, if you know somebody who's a huge retirement retirement, you know, different people next to the next level down that might be interested in that and might have qualifications to be able to carry out that interruption service?
I, I don't think anybody's planning on retiring. So I won't say there's a formal plan, but we, we do have cross-training in most parts in most positions. So if that were to happen, we'd be able to fill in as necessary. I, as I say, I don't think right now there's a formal succession plan, although I'm no spring chicken, so I would say within the next ten years, you'll need to think about that.
I would also like to say on that, we, we don't have a formal succession plan, as in we like task somebody to fill that position when they leave, because we like to give all of our staff the opportunity to apply for it. That doesn't mean that we haven't mentally, like, clocked people that we see moving up and will encourage them. It's why some of our positions are internal first, before they go external, so that we can give our staff the opportunity to move into those positions. Generally, a full-time position is going to be internal first, not the upper management, just our librarians and the library assistants, so that our part-times can move into a full-time, and then we would hire outside for those part-time.
And we have put things in place, like standard operating procedures, documenting, you know, how to do things, so that if somebody won the lottery and left us, that we would have, you know, the, the ability to replace them. We also have the tuition assistance program. We encourage our staff to get a bachelor's degree, because librarians do require that, and/or a master's degree. So we do, it is not formally in place, but informally, we are doing a lot.
We try to grow internally first, but that's not the same when an, an external position is advertised, and we see a great candidate, but we don't reach outside and have several times. Any library staff winning the lottery, please remember that we have a library foundation, and your donation of stocks and/or cash will be worthy welcome. Have we had our folks come in?
And I just have to, on the higher, you all have done the amazing job of building major processes and steps and procedures to cultivate talent and help them grow. And really, the only living factor is the money that we have, data. Who would bring the best and most certain? Any other questions or thoughts on this at the time?
All right, well, let's move on to a security update, and I hope that we will be joined. If not, at some point, I'll relay to you emails I have had, and I did forward those emails to you about that Three Hundred Years of Black Cooking and what they have in mind. So we can maybe circle back with them if we need to. Security update, we have a quote for doing the alarm button and the door closures, and it's about twenty thousand dollars a library. So we're going back to that company and saying, okay, what about this is? So there would be, you know, one of the modules was, on every computer, suddenly an alert's going to come up. We think, okay, you know, all staff will get notifications instantly. It's like, there's a few things there that we think are maybe not absolutely necessary. So we'll be coming back to you with another quote, but I think will be a lot more reasonable than twenty thousand dollars per.
Could you say that again? What does a twenty thousand cover?
Well, it includes, for example, on every computer in the library, an alert would, would appear.
But, but what triggers the alert?
If we push the button.
So does it include the panic button?
Yeah.
Panic button?
Yes, yes.
That locks the front door?
Yes, for Leonardtown, and for Lexington Park, an additional one at the security station. But you can already, from here and from Lexington Park, from the customer service desk, lock the front doors.
And then alert on that.
Yeah, and, you know, all, basically, all staff would get notifications, and, and it would ring into, I think, directly into the emergency at St. Mary's County, although we're still trying to make sure that that would be possible, as opposed to going through a vendor. So we, we think it's just a lot more than we absolutely need to have. So as I say, we'll be bringing up another quote. And I, one thing you might want to be thinking about, and you don't have to think about it today, would be, all right, security's a priority, but we don't have something built in to the budget for it. So you might want to think about, as we ask your approval for next fiscal year's budget, a security line? Or do you think it's important enough that you would like to spend rainy day funds for it? And let's not have that conversation now. It's just something, as we want to move forward and fund these things, how are we going to do that?
And you've heard from, how, how did their bid stack up against the others?
We are looking at two firms, and that's the only quote I've got so far. And that's being handled by Corey, who's our security sort of coordinator, working out of Lexington Park.
So we only have two respondents?
Only two so far. But we're looking for more.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, great.
Really quick, I mean, from experience, the monitor notifications are only effective if you're sitting at your desk looking at your monitor. So just off the cuff, I'm thinking audible.
Yeah.
I mean, because of plenty of people here in this joint, and not sitting.
Yeah, and that would even be for, like, public, public computers.
True.
So, yeah, so I, you know, I, I think that maybe we don't need that. I, I think, you know, we can, we can very quietly be alerting people they've got a situation. But I, I hope it never happens that we have a situation where everybody already knows. But yes, we have our guest here now.
Hi, Craig. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for, for having me. Let me finish this. Okay, I'm ready.
It's a little tough for us to hear you.
It does.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm going to plug in some headphones here, and sometimes they work well.
One moment, Craig, if you could wait one moment, we need to adjust our volume, because we cannot hear you.
Okay. How are we doing? Is this a little better? How are we doing? Is this a little better? Is this better? All right. Can you hear me yet? All right.
Maybe.
How are we doing?
You tried speaking one more time?
Yes, how are we doing? I can hear you.
Yeah, it's our side. It's our bottom for you for just one moment. We're still working on this.
Okay.
Try one more time.
Okay, can you hear me?
No, not yet. I apologize for this delay.
Okay, no worries.
One more time, Craig?
Okay, can you hear me yet? How are we doing? Hello, 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 hello.
Thank you so much for your patience.
No worries. Can you hear me? How are we doing?
I think the problem is, we're going to be, you can hear you.
Uh, what I hear from your end is a lot of echo at this point.
Excellent idea. So Craig, could we ask you to just present to us, and we will type you our questions in the chat?
Sure. I'm sure, be glad to. So I'm assuming you can hear me at this point? So can you, can you hear me at this point?
You guys shake your head.
Okay, so it appears you can hear me. I, I come, I, I come before you today with an idea. I just finished a documentary film that the cookbook, The Three Hundred Years of Black Cooking in St. Mary's County, I encountered in the process of doing this documentary. The documentary itself is called Grandma's Hands, and it's a, it's an intimate journey through, told through six Southern Marylanders in their own kitchens, making their grandma's recipes, of family histories that also, also speak to a region, cultures, and, and, and a number of things that, that we share, share in common. The newly formed Southern Maryland National Heritage Area has assumed this as one of their major projects now, because of the, the, well, because of, of, of the subject matter, the way it's presented, and the depth of our, of our understanding about food and, and the importance of the way that, that speaks of, of our heritage in so many different ways. That's how I came across the cookbook. I actually, one of my subjects, her grandmother is in the cookbook. And we did a recipe from that cookbook. And during the interview portion of my time with, with Teandra, who lives in Lexington Park, we talked about several of the people that contributed to that cookbook that are still with us. The fact that her grandmother actually operated a hotel in Leonardtown, who knew? It's just a very rich, it, it turned out that the cookbook became, kept coming up again and again throughout the documentary. And from the national heritage point of view, it started taking on the, the trappings of, of less of a cookbook and more of a historical documentation of, of the time. So we'd, we'd like to see if we could bring, we could breathe, breathe some life back into this. We would seek a grant to be able to potentially republish it. We don't, this is, we understand and, and the significance, the historical significance of this particular book in the Southern Maryland story. So we would like to do something, and, and at that, and this is as far as we've gotten with the business plan. So we wanted to bring to you, first of all, this sort of general idea. Second of all, to see if you were interested in getting involved with us as far as doing something with this book. If there's guidelines, if you've done this before with other people, and this is how it turned out, and this is the way we'd like to do business, or is it just totally uncharted territory, and we just kind of all need to put our heads together and try to figure it out? So that's sort of where we are. And I appreciate the time to come up and, and, and talk to you about it. So I'm not seeing any questions. Okay.
Okay.
The, the sound coming from you is not good.
All right, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Beautiful. Okay. So we have seen some of the email threads that Michael has forwarded us, and, you know, I, I think this is a really intriguing and amazing idea, and it could be a great opportunity for the community. I guess, I'm not quite sure, sort of like, where are you in terms of your formulation? Any kind of idea or plan? Is there a specific ask you have for us right now? Or are we just trying to sort of figure out if this is something we can work on?
I, I think, I think what, well, first of all, my involvement with this, other than I, I'm, I wrote and directed the, the film, is that I'm actually an employee of the Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission. I'm in charge of their projects and infrastructure development and that sort of thing. My background is I had a restaurant in Annapolis, so it was locally sourced for many years, so food is kind of my thing. The National Heritage Area, as you may know, was just newly formed through an act of Congress last year. So we're in the process of doing our management plan, final recognition by the U.S. Park Service, that sort of thing. So we're in the process of identifying where this National Heritage Area is going to go in many different directions, through tourism, through historical documentation, all those sort of things. So I think what our original idea was just to come to you and see if it were possible for us to have this book reprinted, kind of very simply. I think there are all sorts of spinoffs of how, how this could grow. I see a documentary film in here again, too. I, you know, the hook of people still being alive that contributed to this book, the possibilities of maybe being able to engage the community to even do a newer version, potentially. This idea of this person's grand, great-grandmother running a hotel in Leonardtown is also fascinating. It just seems a lot of things generate from this book. And being a cook myself, when I use books like that, I like to hold it in my hand. When I use books like that, I like to hold it in my hand, I like to flip through it. It also, it doesn't just have recipes, it also has pictures of historical things that service the African-American community. So I guess at, at heart, it's just a very simple question now, um, do you see a path forward and, and us being able to develop this? Uh, we're not asking for any money or anything like that, just, uh, um, you folks have done a great job in saving this. You've had it digitized, that's terrific. Um, maybe it's time to bring it back out and let people hold it too, in which case we'd like to, we'd like to lead that effort.
Yes.
So when you say reprint, do you have any idea how many copies and I guess I'm hearing saying you would, these would be for sale and the heritage site would be selling the books?
Um, maybe. Um, I think for, and yeah, this, this would end up, I mean, if we were to continue this discussion, this would end up as a, as a business discussion between you folks and the National Heritage Area. And at which case, the scope of work, you know, the intentions, where the money would go and flow and all the rest of that would be all laid out at that point. We, we would do a formal presentation to you. Uh, that would make sense hopefully to both of, you know, both of us. Um, at this point, we just want to see if you're interested. And if you are, I would like to invite you, any of you, to come to the, the debut of the movie up in Annapolis. It's a red carpet event a week from Tuesday. And you'll be able to kind of see what I mean about, um, how this book is important to tell the story.
Um, just a that's a quick note about some historical sort of background here. We did not originally own the copyright on this book, but it was given to the library. Um, and we had about five hundred copies printed, but they were not really, um, selling like hotcakes. We were selling them through the museum board, we were selling them through the friends. We ended up giving away about a hundred. And that's when the board did vote to digitize this. We wanted to preserve it for historic purposes. It is digitized under a Creative Commons license, so, um, Greg, um, you, you would require the board's permission to do any kind of a reprint. Um, but it is freely available to people to see all over the world. Um, and it's done through the Digital Public Library of America and you can access it through our Palace app. So you, you, you wouldn't need the board's permission to move forward, but it sounds like what you're really asking is would the board consider moving forward and we will have more formal discussions later?
That is, that, that is correct. Um, no, I, I think, and I think the, the question of how many are gonna be, are, are, would be printed, how they would be sold, if they would be sold, how would they be used? Those are all questions for us to discuss if there's interest in us and, and, and moving forward with this.
Craig, I think there is definitely interest in moving forward. Um, you know, we don't have a lot of money to contribute to this initiative, given all of the other demands. Um, but I do think this is a great idea and hey, if we have a movie titled version of the cookbook, we do the skills to do it better than last time, who knows?
Uh,
I, I would be, go ahead. I'd be very interested in the, seeing the film. Um, either, I don't know if you could send us some information? Or after the debut in Annapolis, is it going to be available elsewhere?
Um, uh, yes, um, the debut in Annapolis, uh, should you like to attend, I will, I would like to send you a formal invitation. Um, so if you, uh, if you could send me your email, uh, then I will send a formal invitation to you, which you can respond to. The, the rollout is being handled by a professional ad agency in the Annapolis area, so they're handling the, um, the event. Uh, I would send you an invitation, you would simply RSVP and, and that would be that. Um, for what's going to happen afterwards, uh, right now, it's being, um, seriously looked at by Maryland Public Television. And we're entering it into some film festivals. So there are requirements on how wide we can show this. In the meantime, while it's going through this approval process with MPT and, um, and, uh, the film festivals. Uh, we are planning on having a Southern Maryland rollout, probably in late, late spring, early summer. Uh, maybe down in the general Leonardtown area. Um, and that, and then it would be open to the public. We won't have it online until all of this activity, which quite candidly is all new to me, by the way. Um, all of this activity, um, uh, takes place and then we can put it online, but that, that's probably a few months.
Greg, I have the invite that you sent. I will make sure the board has seen it. I thought, or I had already forwarded that invite um, to you, so you may respond individually, but I'll make sure that you've seen the invite that Craig sent to me. Uh, unfortunately, I've got an event already that evening, um, but, um, if you are feeling like going to Annapolis to see this, uh, and it sounds like you're willing to continue this conversation.
Thank you, Greg. I, we are definitely very interested in continuing the conversation. Thank you for the invitation to the review, uh, to the debut, excuse me, I get all my red carpet events. Uh, but we are looking for you and learning more about this opportunity.
Great, well, thank you very much. Look very forward to, make sure that you stop and introduce yourself to me when, uh, when you come, uh, because it's going to be quite a night and, uh, all the people that are involved in the project will be there. We're gonna have a question and answer period afterwards with a reception, so, uh, look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thanks for coordinating that. Sure. Uh, thank you so very much for considering this. I think it's, uh, an exciting opportunity to get the books physically in your hands. Uh, but you will be the ones who make the decision about how any reprint would happen, how the library would be involved. Um, uh, go ahead and brush up your, uh, your, your, um, your movie voices. Um, we're on to legislative update. The crossover day is March eighteenth. So on March eighteenth, bills have to go from one side to the other to be considered. And before, um, I uh, get things all wrong, I'd like to say, I'd like to give you a more formal presentation next month because we'll have a better idea of what bills have crossed over. Um, but, um, from what we're hearing, we are putting amendments forward in the collective bargaining bill that we think would be problematic, um, for libraries if passed as is. And again, I don't see that as an issue here in, in St. Mary's County. Um, but we do know that there are other systems in typically more central where, um, union, uh, votes may, may occur. I just want to make sure that this process is guided well for libraries. It's not an anti-union bill. Um, or I'm sorry, I meant they're not anti-union or somewhere like, let's make sure the process, if a library is going to unionize, happens well. Um, it's, um, looks like the, uh, regional bill that will allow Smurla to have one member from each of these boards, Calvert Trials, St. Mary's, and, and John, that would be you, continuing, and then two members from the public. Um, it looks like that bill is going to move forward and probably get passed, so that will obviously guide how the Surla Board will be sort of, um, constituted. We think that, um, the SLRT bill is because it's got funding, it's going to require some special hearing. Uh, anything that's got a fiscal limit this year is getting really closely looked at. Um, we hope that will pass because a lot of libraries get databases through the state, including us. And those databases get increasingly expensive, so, um, we just have to see whether that funding comes forward. It, it is fortunately not a large mass funding, it's an increase over the years. So we're hoping that that will stay. The library funding that was in place um, as part of the previous, uh, legislative process, it's in Maryland Law now, in Maryland Code now, was not modified. So we will be getting a small funding increase, we think, from the state. We were concerned that was going to be taken away. So far, it looks like it will be in place. Um, the Freedom to Read Bill has had two hearings and has gone through. Uh, if I were betting, I'd say that's going to cross over and, and, and pass, but amendments are being put into it to take account of some concerns that were raised about it. It's by no means a slam dunk, um, there are, there is opposition to it, um, we'll just have to see, but it would allow, um, we already have everything we need in place, if that bill were to become law, to be in compliance with it. But, you know, it would basically, um, say that, give us extra strength in how we handle challenges to materials. It would, I don't think this would ever happen here, but it would not allow librarians who are simply standing up for their collections to be fined, sent to jail, or dismissed. Um, so, uh, we, we think that that's a bill that is probably going to go through. There were two bills coming forward that would restrict at the government level, what might be in libraries, and those are going to quietly die and commit. So, um, wait till next month to give you more formal update and a reminder exactly what each bill will be, once we get a better idea of if they're going to pass. Thank you. Um, we've been talking to the folks at Asset Strategy. They are concerned to give you reports on a quarterly basis that you're finding helpful. And last time, we asked them to really don't get down into a lot of detail. Give a report about, here's the big picture, here's how your investments are doing. Here's how these new investments that we have in place as much as we can are doing, and they want your feedback. Um, and if you want to share that via email, I'll happily share their email addresses, although I believe you have them. But they simply want to know, is what they did last time helpful to you? And if you've got suggestions that we would pass back to them to say, we'd like to see this.
Me personally, I, I find the format helpful. I'm ha, like, I'm happy to kind of continue with it and if feedback emerges, we can address it. My only thought is that when they are doing presentations with us over Zoom, if they could, like, share their screens so that they just broadcast the graph that they're talking about at the time, I think that would simplify things and minimize all the paper shuffling we're doing. But in terms of the format of the report itself, I am good. What do other folks think?
I think for the, for the presentation, I mean, I, I'd have to look at the format again. Um, but all the background informations, I don't think they need to cover in the presentation. I think they should go right to our account and to our funds. We have time to look through all the background information beforehand and afterwards if we want to, but I don't need the universal worldwide, this is how the markets are doing. I think we can read through that, but just focus on our funds. Performance and if somebody has a question about the bigger picture, I think we could bring that up. I think that would help focus the presentation on to right where we need to be.
Yeah, just the high points.
Just our performance on our funds. And, you know, they could continue to include it, but we don't necessarily need to discuss all that. That's my opinion.
And I concur with that. I would, I would simply add in that, um, and the point I was trying to make, oh, oh, kind of got lost in the, uh, technology crash, but they came at us with a recommendation for a bond fund. And he was making an argument for it that it contained high yield. That the fund managers could swing the percentages of high yield down in that bond fund according to what managers do, which is look out for the fund. But the thing that bothered me about all that, we had already taken steps to eliminate high yield as an asset class. And I guess they had copies of us having adopted that policy. And then here he is with something that says, well, it's in there and it enhances how the fund does, and they could go as high as twenty percent. And what happened too, we're not using that. It was in the policy. Also, and now this is from memory, when the one that he presented, it was one of two that he brought to the table quite some time ago. But the one that he presented to us, one with the high yield buried down in it, was actually much more expensive to operate as a fund than the other. So I have a little bit of concern that we're maybe not doing the best we can in terms of, um, examining the cost structure of the various funds. And I'm using this one as my example.
John, could I please ask you to, uh, either meet with me or write that up? Um, because I, I think getting into that, we're not looking at our performance, the big picture, but I think your question's a valid one, so let's get that to them separately. And they will address that separately and then I think bring it to the board with, you know, an answer. Um, but for their initial presentation, I think that's going to get them down, down in the weeds where you've got some kind of not to be. So let's, maybe we can, we can address that separately.
All right, yeah, I, I think that would be good to address before they come back, I guess, in May. And, and to me, it's a question of, are we honoring and following the policy statement that the board has approved? And if they're playing within the lines, great, you know, I'm happy to defer to their expertise, but let's make sure we're kicking the tires and giving them information. So, thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm with everybody else. I don't think we need the in-depth worldview. We might, over time, suggest a new way to explain the data that they're giving us. But I think the worldview is, is probably irrelevant to our situation.
All right, well, thank you for that feedback. And, and John, let's go ahead and as, if, if you want to write that up as a demo or something, um, we'll pass it along to them and say we need an answer on this particular question. And they, they will get back to you and it possibly would be an email answer that I'll just sort of share with everybody. Um, and then open it up for discussion the next time they're, they're here. Um, like to show you some, um, PowerPoint slides here, if we could. So Amy Dickinson, uh, and I visited, uh, Perrin up in uh, Calvert County where her studio is, and you can see some of the art that's going to be going into the garden project in front of the Leonardtown Library. So there are four um, booths, they look like that. I look back when I'm sorry. And each one is a season and they'll be set in different places out in the garden. And there'll be mosaics in between these kind of large medallions. So we just want to look at some of the medallions of, uh, next slide, please. And this one's not been fired yet. It's, I don't have the color, it will be green, I'm sure, but you can see brain mantis. Next, frog. Owlets.
Michael, you're doing very well.
Um, this one actually has been fired at Cooper's Hawk and, uh, the colors didn't come out very well on my photo of it. But, um, that one's kind of looking more like what they will actually look like. And again, they'll be set against a mosaic. Next, please. And now you see one that, excuse me, is been fired, very colorful. The golden didn't come out as well as I would like. That's a goldfinch. Um, again, from my, my photo, uh, next. Oh, that was it? Okay. Um, Amy was going to add more slides, but she hasn't yet. In any case, very colorful, um, I think it's going to be beautiful. And that's a grant from the state of Maryland, um, for fifty thousand dollars. Um, and our partners, uh, got that grant, so, um, very happy to have that project move forward. I have news for you on another project.
I'm, I'm sorry, on that last project, any sense of when they'll actually be in?
Um, we're, we're looking at fall.
Fall, yeah.
It'll be beautiful. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be incredibly beautiful. I don't think there's anything in there from what I've seen that anybody's going to object to.
But Harvard Commissioners can step with where the project is.
Um, well, they haven't seen this, but I, I, they know what's going on and they've given permission since officially, you know, the county owns the land. So they're fully apprised that this is an art project and we presented it to You know, the county owns the land, so they're fully apprised that this is an art project and we presented it to them and we have their permission on this.
Okay, and now we can read them in on what it's going to look like.
Um, I I will happily share my PowerPoint with them, I I don't think that there's going to be any objections. They've even commented on this in public forums, um because we presented it to them. And I I was reminded by Commissioner Colvin that honeybees are not native pollinators. Okay, Commissioner Colvin, um you are very informed, and thank you, I'll make sure we don't have honeybee there. Uh, and and thank you, Commissioner Colvin, in case you are going to review this for your suggestions about what our website could have, and we've added those. Uh, some genealogic resources and a link to the full run of the county types. Another project we're working on, and if you were to walk out. The front of this library and go to the multi-use trail, out there you will see ten small blue flags. Those are where posts for a story walk are going to be. And there are also twenty of them, either there's twenty here, ten on each side. Uh, twenty going into Leonard Town as well, the story walk is basically a board, a weatherproof board. Where we put pages from books and especially families with people learning how to read, walk from post to post to post. And that's a grant from Leonard Town Rotary uh for. And I've ordered the post, so that cost will be about nine thousand two hundred dollars, the grants for nine thousand three hundred should cover the um. Quick read and whatnot that will need, but the Library Foundation has said they will fund a small amount. Um, if there's an overrun there, but I'm not expecting there to be. And we have to say thank you to Smecko, um and the reason why is we're working uh with Smecko to actually come out and drill the um. Post holes, which is going to mean that I don't have to be out there with a post hole digger um at my age, probably breaking my back. Um, so and we're going to do joint um work between Rotary and Smecko to get this project out. The library is more of the grateful recipient, um but will be involved with publicity for this. I'd really like to have a story um in local media about these once they're in. And make sure that Rotary and Smecko are going to get thanks for that project. I don't, I'm working with Sandy and Dwayne. Um, and the posts will not themselves won't arrive until late March, so I'm thinking we're probably in April. To uh to do this, and yes, we've we've got. Words from the county and we've got Miss Utilia said it's okay, so we're not going to like dig a, dig a hole in the ground and and short out the entire power to the library here. One more action item for you and and not much in the way of action items this time around. Um, do you, the trustees, receive a Maryland Public Information Act request from a member of the public to see the um. Contract for who? And. I have that contract and I'm happy to share that contract. But he made the request to you, and although I followed up with an email back and saying, if you want fast action, please redirect your request to me. Because the trustees would have to say yes to this. Um, there's no reason for you not to say yes, but because they made the request to the board, I did not feel empowered to just do it. But I can, I can do this on Monday, um but I just want you to say, yeah, please go ahead and fulfill the terms of this in Public Information Act request as a board.
Yeah, and we saw the email part about this, thanks for sharing that. I guess my one question, is there anything in the contract that that needs or should be redacted in any way?
No, it's it's a simple public contract, it's really mostly boilerplate. And so, you know, if there's something like our account number for um. For Bupla, even that probably wouldn't need to be redacted, but I'll review again, but there's no secret details there, this is, you know. Something that that anybody can see and I, you know, don't think that. Anything controversial or anything problematic in it or even can come from it, it just sets up the terms under which we get content.
So so I think we're ready to entertain a motion to um. Approve the fulfillment of this NPIA request from a member of the public, show move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed abstained, all right, who cares?
Well, well, Michael, do you want to take a break at this point or you just want to plow into the new trustee business?
Thank you, do. We want to take a break?
Let's take a five minute break.
So uh, let me throw out a motion that we take a five minute break.
Move that we adjourn for five minutes.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Okay, well, everybody, we're moving on to the new trustee business section. And there is an item about the procurement process. And there's one other thing I want to raise, but first, John Walters, do you want to introduce this draft, draft, draft? Policy that you have added to the packet?
Just a little background on this. It seemed to me that it would be in our best interest both in terms of getting the best pricing, the best vendors, and also to protect us from any liability that we didn't do our duty under the law to have some sort of a policy. Our be in our trust fee manual. That could address this and then we wouldn't have I'm gonna call it institutional memory problem going forward. Have a policy, may not be these words, have an adoption, and then it goes into a trustee manual. And voila, it's trying to tell we updated or that's the background.
And let me emphasize, this is not an action item. This is really just to begin the conversation and that we can consider, you know, if we choose to. So this is the start of a conversation.
So I understand. Sounds like the email marketplace is a place where we where we register vendors and then put out notices. So and so we know so we understand what vendors are dealing with and what which what their capabilities are.
You're almost on target. Anybody who wants to do business within the state of Maryland and Maryland governmental system, top to bottom, they have to step up and register themselves and prove that they are a qualified firm. So if a firm had a lot of, let's say, legal judgments against it, it probably would not be approved to be on the E Maryland menu. You have to get on the menu first. Then you have the situation the other side where the state, top to bottom, agencies and sub-agencies are required by law with their wants on to Emma. And so all these people who have registered, they they specify what category they're interested in. So when Emma came out and I was working for Edward Jones, I registered as a financial services firm. And they looked over me and they looked over Jones. And so I got in there on the menu that way. So they have to be proactive about getting on the menu, being approved to go on the menu. And then on the buy side, where we would be on the buy side, then we have a requirement to throw it out there and see what turns up.
A feeling it'd be in their best interest to be there in the first place of, you know, a vendor. And I know in some fields, there's either requirement or a goal that like spend a certain amount with like women or minority owned or veteran of vendors, like achieving a certain percentage of that is a goal. I don't think that's universal in all fields. So I think maybe government agencies might have some of that.
That may be true. And I don't know about am I having that as a subset of on the registration side? Check if you are one of these things. I don't know if that moves you to the top of the heap on the menu or whatever. What I what I remember from MA is that there are different levels of participation. So if you go out for a fairly small item, and I want to say $5,000 is the number, we'd have to check on that. There is a different pathway for dealing with something like that as opposed to your going out for a hundred thousand dollar item. And whether it's goods or services, again, you got all these different pathways down inside the EMMA program.
Have a bit of a clarification and I shared an email with Michael and John Johnston. So yes, we are required to participate in Emma and that came about last August because you wanted us to make sure that we were putting our RFP out there. And so I will tell you, it took quite a bit of rambling to get us in because they turned us down. And I may be overstated our independence from the county and didn't stress, for example, that they own the buildings. But so they said, you're in now there. It turns out, and I said, well, you know, this is gonna be an option. It turns out, and I clarified this just last week with the folks at Emma. And they said, yes, you have to post in Emma. So that is that is a requirement and we will make sure we do that. They also clarified, you do not have to post only in Emma. And we may reach out. They've said it's a minimum requirement and we can post outside. And I'll give you a reason why we want to do that. We've used Emma once for the strategic planning RFP. And we got 10 responses, eight from Emma and two from outside. And Sharon sat on that. She's not here today. Two that came from outside were the two finalists. They were the ones who knew about libraries because I posted on a library list and there are library lists where you can post these things. So we are required to post in Emma and we will do that. We need to determine at what level of cost that will be. But I hope that this policy moving forward will include the ability to reach outside as well. And you'll be able to tell from the business that a vendor has done, even if they haven't registered themselves in Emma, whether or not they'd be worthy of consideration.
I mean, I think that's a very important point and we wouldn't want to narrow our options artificially or position ourselves for less than ideal arrangements. If we limit ourselves only to Emma rather than saying, yes, we have to do Emma, but we can also open the gates more broadly.
But it does bring up an interesting question and I hadn't thought of it in this way. If if we're required to use Emma and we go outside and choose one of them, are we in any way violating the state procurement?
No, as I said, I've got a clarification from that. What we would have to do is the follow-up is post that we've chosen a vendor and here is the vendor. But no, we would not be we would not be violating the state procurement process. They would allow, they specifically said, it's just a minimum requirement.
So as long as we go out, you think would be okay, even if we didn't choose?
Yeah, if we could, we could choose an outside vendor, a vendor outside Emma, and that would not violate Maryland state procurement issue, you know. We'd want to make sure that it was a reputable firm and we might even want to say to that person, hey, you might wanna get in. But it would not be, you know, they specifically said you don't have to only do Emma.
Yeah, I agree. I think that should definitely be part of the policy. Or you may go to Emma and not find anybody to your, that's gonna meet our needs, you know, so you have to go outside. So that that makes sense. I think the level is, you can look it up, Maryland procurement manual is lengthy, but in the first, in the first, you have section three, it's pretty easy to understand the limits and it's $15,000 and is kind of using Emma. Under 15,000, you still need to do your due diligence. There's a couple of levels, under 5,000, under 15,000. That can be some of those phone calls, emails, or Amazon. But over 15,000, I think pretty much you use Emma. And they have a lot of things. They have their own databases. We used to call them schedules, like John said, saving, we need an accountant. See, go to financial services, schedule, and you just target that that area. But they also have on here, they have the prison systems, Maryland Correctional Institute, say if you're buying furniture or blind industries, service providers, they have certain databases that they're saying, just consider these first. And the small business consideration also, they use the word consideration, not requirement, where the feds, it's a requirement. So that's how IV visits consideration, which is certainly something I think we should do. I think we're probably getting small vendors anyway on a lot of this, a lot of these things.
So if the if the Maryland state manual only kind of articulates the required use of Emma for contracts over 15,000, would we want to implement a more restrictive policy with libraries and every contract? As Emma?
No, no, I think what our policy, our policy should say that we follow the Maryland procurement manuals. I believe that's what our policy should say. That kind of covers us with everything. With a stipulation, I think that you brought up, Michael, is that we can go outside of Emma. I know, I'm not sure it's specifically stated in here, but certainly we use Emma as a minimum, but we can simultaneously or afterwards go outside of some of our requirements. I think the easiest way is that, don't rewrite, don't rewrite Genesis, just it's right here. And I mean, I think we should look at it carefully and see if there's anything we want to have a problem with, but they've already done the hard work for us. It's it's all done. So.
A follow-up question just on the language here to make sure I'm understanding because it's a little bit different than what you gave me as one of my goals for the year. And that had a three-year cycle where we'd be looking at the contracts. What this says is that at each year, I will present to you a list of things that it says have not been completely written in the previous three fiscal years. So that's slightly different. And then I want to know from that list of trustees, I'll choose like three providers we're getting. I have no problem with this. I'm just trying to clarify for me. So what it sounds like is each year you'd like a list, not of here's a three-year cycle, but here's things that haven't been rebid in three years. And then you're going to choose three from that list. Am I reading that right?
That was the concept. What I was thinking is, I don't know how long the list is, but I thought this might be a way to kind of ease into it and let the trustees decide, oh, well, this one and this one are both important and low hanging fruit. This one down here, let's say reworking the phone system. Maybe they choose that as one of the three, but those three then start their three-year clock. We won't see them for a while.
Okay, just making sure of what the process was because it seemed a little bit different than what the goals I were set. And if, you know, this is what it is, then I will.
That's a good question, but this is not anything right now.
Yeah, I think I think this was probably, now that we've learned a little bit more about it, I don't necessarily agree with this policy. I think I'd like to think of our idea of having the three-year plan and everything gets reviewed every three years. I don't care what order you put the three years in. I don't think we, I don't, I'd like to see the three-year report every year. But which which contracts you put in which years, that's up to you. And and I think we're not picking anymore. If we're saying everything should be reviewed every three years, then everything should be reviewed every three, stop three. Not limiting it to three. So I think that's what our intention was, get it by the mall and everything gets a three-year review. As trustee, I don't care what order you do it in, just sitting in front of them. And yes, every year, every year, your plan, plan would be updated, which you rolled over another year. Some vendors are gonna drop off and some are gonna come on. But it's just, we'd just be updating the plan every year.
I understand your position. Doesn't that mean there's right now?
Except for workload, that would be, I think, untenable workload. I think they've got to decide what all their service contracts, procurement contracts, and decide what order to put them in. Maybe your oldest first, maybe your most important first, I don't know. I think that's up for you all to look at and decide because you're more familiar with the service contracts than we are. So. But yeah, some of them are gonna hang on for two more years. That's that's true, but you gotta start somewhere.
Well, and I think, and you know, we asked Michael to work on the plan itself. Let's see how that plan shapes up. I do think the idea of memorializing a procurement policy would be beneficial for the trustees. John, if you would like to take another pass at this, kind of in light of this conversation, maybe we can continue the conversation in April. But for the time being, you know, Michael has his goals. Let's see how they're working. And I think we can iterate and adjust as we need.
One question for you at this point, and it says at the very beginning, all contracts having an annual cost of dollar sign. And Judith, you've just given us a figure of 15,000. I mean, what is that number going to be? And the reason why I ask is because if we're at a really low figure, first of all, rebidding probably not going to save us as much money as the time we spend on something. And it's also going to be on you trustees. And again, I know this is not a policy, but you know, if we're going to be rebidding something and you want a trustee to sit in, as Sharon did for the RFP for the strategic plan, and I should give you an update on that in just a second. But that's that's fine. But if, you know, it's a thousand dollar contract and it's everything. And, you know, do you really want to have it as a trustee to have to be here every time we do even that smaller contract?
I agree. I mean, I have concerns about sections C and E in this, about the board having final selection on everything and the board reviewing every contract. I think if I would like to talk next month about sort of the rationale behind that and where that is coming from. But I don't think that's a conversation we need to have today as we sort of reframe the scope of this. And again, and to address your question directly, I say we go with whatever the Maryland procurement manual says. I do not want to have a more restrictive onerous burden that we choose to inflict on ourselves here.
Yeah, I can see Maryland's, Maryland's to all this manual. This point, we have any reason to question it.
We already have the follow-up.
Right, right. And why be more restricted? They've kind of already figured it out.
Okay, so.
So if you're asking for dollar amounts?
No, you'd have to decide that now. I just think that the figure you gave was from the procurement manual. Maybe Judith, would you be willing to take a look at the manual or I will move it? But I think it would be good to have your feedback, look at the manual and come back next month and just say, based on my reading, this would be a reasonable figure. And it has been 25,000 in the past that required us to go out to RFP. But let's look at that manual and just say, what would be a good number?
Okay, good number for what again, for the for the board review or for you to?
No, no, to put into a procurement policy, what would be the amount? Having a contract, let's call it 15,000 or more. So we wouldn't be looking at things less than 15,000.
So if we, if the policy is we follow the Maryland procurement manual, it's already spelled out here. Could spell that out again. So so really quickly, one to $5,000 makes a phone calls, right? Five to $15,000, obtain responsibilities or acceptable offers from at least two vendors by oral or written solicitation. Again, literally phone calls or emails or Amazon. That's basically 15, 15 to 100 is we're going out on Emma. We're going out closely. We're gonna have.
Thank you for clarifying. I think it will be acceptable just to say we follow the Maryland procurement manual. And if the procurement manual changes, we don't have to change our policy.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, so I think you're okay. Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely. I'm just, again, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm understanding what that number would be. And I think that gives a very good idea of what that number is gonna be.
I have you send a link.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, no, I. You don't need to do that because I actually was boring through quite a bit of this last week, just say, okay, where are we with this? And it is like you can have any color as long as you want, as you want, as long as it's black. Meaning, you know, you're in now. And they offered to review and say, well, you want us to look at this again and make sure. And I said, no, we're in. So please know that.
Do we have anything over $100,000? A year, a year.
A year. I don't think we do.
Because that gets more complicated.
No, we don't have anything that's $100,000 a year from any single vendor. The I mean, there are things that are not in our purview, like health insurance. We get through the county. And, you know, that's not our contract. We just are a participant in it. So for us alone, no.
Okay, I think we've had a good discussion about this to kind of shape our progress moving forward. So thanks, everybody, for that. The one other piece I wanted to throw out under new business from my perspective is just revisiting the performance evaluation form that we used from Michael back in December to January, February. Just because as we were doing it, we all kind of acknowledged, this is really long. There are some questions that are repetitive. This could be streamlined. And so now, while we're early in the year, I thought it might be helpful for us to kind of come up with a plan. I would appreciate it if anybody wants to volunteer to take a look at it and propose some edits. And I think the idea is that we could work to develop a more streamlined form and that we could make sure that Michael sees the form and knows what's going on and because this should be as transparent and clear as possible for everybody, 360 degrees. And so my thought was that since we are very far away from the end of the year and the end of this performance review cycle, could we try to do a little work to make the process better next time? How do folks feel about that?
It could only get better. 28 pages. So are we talking about changing it for this performance year for the director? Because that's not fair to him unless he agrees.
I'm fine with that. I wouldn't mind seeing a streamlined form.
Yes, I mean, I imagine that.
As long as he's okay with that, we're already into the year.
Yeah, no, this is fine.
I'm not sure about cutting more than.
I, I, I was assuming, in fact, that as part of next year's assessment, you would be determining ahead of time what the form would be, just as you did this past year. So if you do it now, you do it then, I, you know, fine with me either way.
Anybody want to take a stab at that or propose some edits to it? Or do we want to assign some of our beloved colleagues from that?
I'm fully informed, just to one of the HR experience.
Okay.
I mean, I would take a stab at doing some research and we have some options, if that's what you like. Sure, with some drafts or a draft or something and.
I mean, I think that, you know, my thought was to take what we did last year and just sort of use that as a starting point rather than starting from scratch on the new thing. If that's what you were saying, maybe it's.
I'm not sure. I'd have to look at it, research and see. Maybe there's somebody else out there that has a system already that we like.
Did you want, I can, I can send out something to the, I mean, well, Michael can too. I mean, the other directors might have other county libraries. I mean.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. If they are willing to share.
I'm sure they would.
That's a great starting point. Some of this has 28 pages. We're looking for less than 10.
Our PA form is like one page.
To clarify, what you're talking about year? About fiscal year?
Calendar year.
That's his performance year.
Okay. All right. So let me let me try to see what other examples I can get and then we will kind of bring this up again with the full board next month. I just want to make sure that we're not caught flat-footed when all rolls around. You know, I think it could be better for everybody. Any other new business people want to bring up?
I had a quick question about where the county stands with establishing the employee health center.
I don't have any more details yet. It has been approved to move forward on it. And I will try to find out for you before next time. But yes, they are, they are working on that. The county commissioners did go to go through with it. And we will have to factor that into our budget and I hope that they are going to as well because there should be some minor increases based on.
I have one new issue out of left field. So looking at the MOUs with the county. Original one, I think, was 2014. I think that may have been the year when the county, the library kind of.
I think officially that was 15, but I think that was in preparation for it. Yes, that was before I got here.
Okay, so interestingly, item three, it says the county will provide the library with internet and telephone service. Interesting. The next one, 3B, says the basic libraries responsible for equipment, computers. The county is going to provide internet and telephone service, 2014. Do we know the history of that and?
We do go through the county for our phones, but we also like pay our bill. But we, we go through their switchboard type thing. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know the IT side of that, but I do know that when our phones go down, we talk to county.
So and in terms of IT, yes, we do work with the county on internet and it's complicated because we have to have things in from the state as well to get access to the databases and the county is not necessarily crazy about that. But we can get you full details on that. But in terms of our network, we are separate from them and they like it that way and so do we.
I'm not sure what this means. I read it as meaning they're gonna provide us a service. They're providing us the service. I read that as they're paying the bill. And I wonder, I don't know if we have any vendors that's 2014 or 15. Then because they provide other things for us too, the building and some of their building services, those kind of things. And it's possible that over the years with things changing the way they do, but I think this is a really thing we should maybe dive into a little bit. It's interesting read. If that was their agreement, if that was their intent was to provide that service to us.
Judith, just a quick question. Is this the MOU for the Lenter Town Library or what MOU is this? I just, I'm not sure. I just wanted to know.
Okay, it was one signed in 2014. I think initially broke the library off as a separate because it's.
We have this in the director's file.
Kind of establishing the duties and responsibilities of both the library and county regarding the small services provided by the county. Okay, the bi-monthly installment, I mean, it kind of covers everything.
Okay, thanks. I just wasn't sure which MOU we were looking at.
Yeah, yeah. And then there was another one in 18. Any more MOUs that I'm missing?
No, we have an MOU every year that sets the amount that the county gives and the amount that the state gives. And that's and thank you, county, you give more than you need to according to the state regulations. So we have that one each year, but we don't have any new ones sort of regulating here. Well, I take that back. The Lenter Town Library has a separate MOU.
Right, we have the, I mean, we have MOUs that are for each branch, the actual building, but that's our, it's kind of our lease agreement with them.
Yeah.
That's the only ones I'm thinking of.
The 2018 doesn't have anything to do with that. It's simply how the trustees will be appointed.
Do the, do the current MOUs for each branch, do they address health?
No, they charge us a dollar a year for leasing. No, the building.
The building.
Those are part of audit too.
To clarify, you say that we get our own connectivity with the internet. I'll clarify, you say that, that we, that we get our own connectivity with the internet? Or is the county providing that? And by network, do you mean like file shares among the branches?
Well, I, I wanna bring in Robert to give you a precise answer, but basically, we're not part of the county's network. We have our own staff required, and that is, I think, something that both me and the county are happy about, and when the county was, we were not. So I do think that I'd want, I'll, I will ask Robert to give you a specific answer as to exactly how that is set up, rather than have me spitball it and get it wrong.
I think our networks are separate, but the actual fiber coming into the building, the county provided that.
That, that is right. They've upgraded it in the last two years so that it's a faster line, so we're, we're always happy to work with them. But I don't think they're like our paid internet service provider. So we can, if you would like to clarify that, we can, can move, we can ask.
I could see if we provide the switchboard, we provide the cables, or we provide, we're gonna pay for it for you. Right, I could see it goes in many directions.
Service to the phone system, local area networks and plans. So, yeah, and sometimes things get lost in translation as years go by, it's changed and technology changes. You know, you could lose the history of. Now that we have our own council. I mean, they could certainly read the M O U and compare their information, but being more important would be does the library ever pay for this? In the early years, didn't they pay for theirs? Usually they'll pay for it. They started out that way, that was their intent.
I think we've always paid for our phone service. I'm not sure about the internet, but.
Certainly, since I've been here, which is since twenty, late twenty fifteen, things are as they have been, and they were established before I got here, so the county, you know, we were paying. So I cannot tell you, however, the intent of the M O U and how that was agreed upon, because I haven't here.
So they, so they're doing like the hardware side of it?
Yeah.
Is there any? Do you feel like it's really more information you move on that kind of track about this? Does this conversations are illuminated?
I'm not sure, I guess I'll leave it to the staff. If you think it's worth thinking into, or if there's any possibility, but if you're that's the history that this is the way it's always been?
It pretty much is the way it's always been, at least during my tenure here, and Mary Ann has got a longer tenure than me. Could we table this until budget discussions are?
Any other new business before we? Are you gonna walk us through some of the upcoming dates?
Sure, but first I'd like to do a recommendation, and that book recommendation is what you were looking for is In the Library, which is a Japanese novel in translation. It's an inspirational tale of how a library recommending books turns people's lives around. They make realizations about themselves, they make community connections, they revitalize themselves as people. It is a pay-on to the library and the power of the book, and I heartily recommend it as a read. You gotta be a librarian every once in a while. Yes, so March twelfth, that would be next Tuesday, is a budget work session. Those happen at one thirty in the afternoon at the Chesapeake Building in the Commissioner's Room. That's not specifically about us, but that's when they start talking about county departments and what county employees may be getting in terms of a staff or COLA, and what departments might be getting what. And I like to attend that, and I always give you an update when I do attend these things, because sometimes it's a preview of to what we might be get. I do remind you that on March nineteenth, we have our specific budget work session in which they talk about what the library initially, their, you know, their, their budget will be getting for the next fiscal year, and I'd like to attend, while I was attend that, because they often have questions for us. So we, you know, have a budget submission in for slightly over a million dollars, they're going to say, why do you need money? And if you would like to be there, that would be good. I encourage your participation if you can, it's an option.
What time is that?
One thirty in the afternoon is when that starts, and we sometimes get asked about two, two fifteen, and sometimes it's four o'clock, five o'clock in the afternoon. So it's just, there's something that we really wanna pay attention to. April ninth, the regional board retreat, and we'll be getting you more details about that. Ash will be sharing that, as John I know. April twenty-third is our public budget hearing. So it's at one of the high schools, I think it's at Chopticon this year, but I'll double-check that for you well beforehand. That's when the commissioners present their draft budget to the county for public comment. I am expecting people to come talk about the library. And I always talk, but you as trustees are welcome to also present a message that night. Talk for three minutes, and just say, you know, your thoughts on the library funding. It is gonna be a very tough budget year, we know. So we'll know on March twenty-third roughly what they're, I'm sorry, March nineteenth, roughly what they're looking at. And then we have about two weeks after that to appeal if we do not like the figure they give us. On, I believe it's after April twenty-third, we have to make our appeal. We've got about a week after April twenty-third, we can say, hey, please, rethink this. And so we'll just have to see what we're getting next year, coming up very soon here.
And, and that's an evening event on the twenty-third?
It is, it starts at six typically, yeah.
So do you think? When will we first see a number?
We're first going to see a number, what they're thinking about on March nineteen. But that's subject to change, but they will probably give us some idea then of what we're looking at. So last year, for example, we knew the number that we finally got on, on roughly that day in March.
Didn't change much.
It didn't change at all, really.
So we know about the extra five hundred, I then?
We knew that, yes. And I'm hoping we know it again. That would be a wonderful thing. Again, it's gonna be a tough budget year. I, I don't envy the commissioners, their decision-making this year, because I suspect that many, many people are going to be unhappy, but it's a tough job, someone's gotta do it. That's what I had for you today, thank you.
All right, everybody. Anything else?
I open this question with Diane Weisner at the county. Did any other trustees get an invite to trustee training?
Yes.
Yes, I never got R C P, like enough, now, I, I, I like dinger twice, I'm like, hey, like, so like, yes, we're in?
Come on out, it's, 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 yeah.
I don't think they take attendance.
It, it's open to, to all trustees, so I have invite as a member of the S S and as a member of the, so, museum board to come to that, and they, they, they do send it out to you as well, and I, I, if it's just going to be open meetings, training, I don't think you're gonna learn a whole lot new. But on the other hand, it's always nice to have a refresher.
Yeah, it was very helpful, us. It'll be good.
My last item is this. I was not really happy with some of the things I saw in the audit, and made some notes and concerns about that. I'm wondering if maybe we should all take a look at the audit, audit rather. Are we looking for discrepancies, things that just don't make sense? If so, that we get those concerns up to the auditors before they dig in and start doing their own thing. And we're going through the same process, final product that we did this past year.
Are you saying reviewing last, the audit that has been finalized and approved? Okay, so what are you proposing?
Well, what I'm proposing is, we all go back, let's look at that, I'll share the things that I saw that struck me as being not right. If everybody thinks, yeah, that's right, you need to get those concerns up to the auditors before they start the work on the next one. I'll give you an easy example. They said when they were talking about the Vanguard funds, they only mentioned single-share class. The dollar amount was correct. We have two different share classes, which totaled that dollar amount. I don't know where the other share class dropped off, but having one was not, that's correct.
Would you email us with what you have found to get that ball rolling? And I think we can, let's take a look over email, and we can determine if we need to add that to an agenda. I think, obviously, ideally in a perfect world, we would have done this before, but it's never too late to do the right thing.
Where we get kind of a compressed timeline. Now, here's the draft, and then we've got this backend, it's gotta be somewhere.
Which we've addressed, and it will be better moving forward. Okay, thank you, John.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, John's point is, I don't think I'm down here doing opening conference with you, or if you do it by Zoom, or how you open up audit, typically it's an opening conference. Then you could at that point say, want to clarify, we think we errors last year, so you could not make those errors again this year. Can't change last year's audit. I mean, technically they could, but they're not going to, so. Yeah, we've concerned about that, I should absolutely put it out there right at the beginning, and they can start working on those issues, or explain why they're right and we're wrong.
Well, there's a, a long process for that. And Belinda does most of that work. I, I think it would be fine if you wish to have concerns put forward via email, but I'd rather have them focusing, and they can say, all right, we'll make sure this year. I want them to be focusing on next year, because this process takes a long time. And it is dependent upon working with the accountant as well as the auditor, and I don't want delays in that process. We will be getting an audit to you, and if we're not approved by November first next year, they're gonna email in and say, where's your audit? I'm gonna say, you know, here's a draft. And they have been satisfied with that in the past, so you'll have ample time to make sure that everything is correct this upcoming year.
All right, last, last call. Go to your chair. We discussion. All right, thanks for a good meeting. All in favor, please. Thanks, everybody. See you next month.